Read out the statement about the filming of this meeting. Please note that the meeting is being filmed for a live stream and also available on the council's website, and a recording will also be available after the meeting. We have no public speaking this evening, and people in the public gallery are not filmed. So, on to the first item, which is the minutes. Is everybody happy for me to sign those? councillor Hornsby-Speith.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to raise a query. I've had a brief discussion. It's about page 11 of the minutes, the Broad Street Mile application. The minutes don't represent the fact that I sought assurances as a query, as we were discussing that, that the external CCTV of the development would not, would be linked to Echotango, the police system, rather than it just being an internal, an internal sort of thing for the applicant, just because it also covers that side of the road as well. So I just sought assurances on that, and it's not recorded in the minutes, it didn't really need to be, but I did want to get an answer at some stage.
Julie, do you want to comment?
Yes, I did say, I did make inquiries, but I haven't had an answer yet, and as I say, it's still in progress, so I'm happy for that to be ministered, as been a request for information to be provided, presumably directly to the officer, to the councillor, rather than bringing it back to PAC necessarily.
Yeah, I'm happy with that, Chair, thank you.
Thank you for that. Anything else on the minutes? No, we're happy to sign them then, thank you. Any declarations of interest? No? Okay, thank you. And there are no questions from either members of the public or councillors this evening, which takes us on to the item four, which is on page 17, potential site visits for committee. Julie, do you want to?
Thank you, Chair. I should have said, Happy New Year to everyone as well, good evening. Yeah, so on page 19 of the agenda, we've got an item that has come in that would be coming to committee because it's an application by the council, but offices aren't recommended that we do a site visit to Sixth Circuit Lane to observe that application. On the reserve list, we do need to amend that list because we have in fact visited Amherst Lane and Dry Road, so that can come off now, and you've also visited the civic offices last week, so that can also come off for the next list. That still leaves Great Brigands Mead and Portman Road to be arranged, but we have no date as yet for when those items are coming to committee, so that's, you'll have to just wait for us to confirm when that will be ready to go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments on site visits? councillor Williams.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to propose, I don't know whether members agree, but I'd like to propose a site visit for one of our agenda items tonight, 19 Newcastle Road. Would you like me to do that now or during the item?
Well, it's a bit last minute, isn't it, to say the least?
It is, yeah, we've often done it before last minute, but, and if members don't agree, that's fine, I just want, would you prefer me to?
Let's get it out of the way now.
Okay.
Point of order, I think it'd be good if the councillor concerned can read his emails a bit more, I think then we'll be able to get business done a lot better.
Do you want to say why you think there should be a site visit?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I think the impact on the green space, and the loss of biodiversity, the loss of one dwelling and then the replacement with two terraces to the rear, I think we should see on the ground, especially with the proximity to the boundary of the park and the significant mature trees that are right up against that boundary. So, whether members agree or not, I don't know, but I think that in order to make that decision, I think we should see the situation on the ground, Chair.
Anybody else want to speak? No, shall we just put it to the vote then? Those in favour of deferral for a site visit? You might have been here tonight and discussed it with us in advance of, you know, the start of the committee meeting, so, you know, I'm not trying to be difficult about that, but it is, you know, just helpful if we have notification of requests like that and why before we get to the meeting, so I don't know whether you could pass that back particularly to your colleague who called it in. Right, that takes us on to, if nobody else has got any more site visits they'd like to propose, that takes us on to appeals on page 21. Julie?
That's me again, yes, thank you, Chair. No comments to make on the appeals that are listed there, the appeals lodged and the appeals decided, although just a procedural thing, that the appeal for the one in Catesgrove appeals decided, that should actually be saying dismissed, not refused, but just a planning thing.
Thank you. Any comments councillor Leng?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. It's just a quick one, and I'd express an interest, obviously, I'm a Whitney Ward councillor. I'm again disappointed to see an appeal lost on a 5G mast, of course, I'm in favour of rolling out 5G, and I can see the benefits to our residents, but we've had a fair share over there, as you may well know, and of course, I just wish that the providers would take into consideration not just putting them where they've already got infrastructure, but maybe looking a bit more outside the box for alternative locations, preferably away from residential areas. Okay, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else? No, in which case, can we note that report, thank you, and move on to applications for prior approval? Julie Williams again, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I've got nothing to add to the report, although I have noted, having looked at the report, how the number of prior approval applications have dropped away, so I was wondering whether it's of any benefit to bring this report every month because of the numbers that we're looking at, but I'll have a little think about that, but yeah, it's interesting because obviously when this started, we had quite a few, but now they are, yeah, they're very few. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody want to comment on that councillor Leng?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I think it's important they do come to committee mainly to highlight the amount of money lost in application fees since they first came in in 2013, so it's just a sort of like gentle reminder of that, really. Okay, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Otherwise, can we note that? Thank you, and go on to item seven, which is the proposed tree works to one protected council tree in Chasie Road. Sarah Hanson, I think, is online somewhere?
I am, thank you, Chair. So as explained in the report, the Town and Country Planning Act requires applications for council-owned or maintained trees to be decided by a committee of the council not responsible for managing the land to which the application relates. The law also requires a public notice to be displayed for at least 21 days, giving details of the proposed works. A notice was put up on the tree on the 12th of December and left for the required period. Paragraph 2.1 of the report details the proposed works. These proposals follow an inspection by Reading Borough Council's Tree Surveyor and Street Scene, which identified fungal brackets at the base alongside cavities. The aim of the work is to make the tree safe whilst retaining it in some form due to the rarity of the species in the borough. It's not known whether the tree will respond favourably to the significant work, particularly given its suboptimal condition, but it's considered an important enough specimen to try as opposed to felling in the first instance. Given the necessity for the proposed pruning on health and safety grounds, and that no objections or comments were received as a result of the public notice, it's therefore recommended that the works be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody want to comment? No, sounds fairly straightforward, so yeah, please do get on with it. Thank you very much, Sarah. Takes us on to item eight, which is street name assignment at the site of 97A to 117 Cavisham Road, and let's hope this is as formal a street ward discussion than the street naming one we had a few weeks ago. Anybody want to add anything? Julie?
Thank you. So the site address is, as already mentioned, 97A to 117 Cavisham Road, used to be the Carter's site, so the recommended name from colleagues is Carter's Close, and that's been shared with the ward councillors and councillor Leng, and I think there was unanimous agreement that Carter's Close was their preferred choice, so that's, just to confirm, there is just one road we're naming here, so that's a recommendation.
Thank you. councillor Davies?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I've got a long speech I want to make about this, actually, because I know that members of the committee are very interested in this topic, and are anxious that street names do reflect the heritage of the area, so, and is in our ward, and you're right, we were consulted, so thank you for that, and I think it's a really good and appropriate name because it commemorates a very popular and longstanding business that was probably used by most people in this, in this room over the years on the site, so thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Can we see all those in favour of what is hopefully unanimous decision? Thank you. And that ends all the part one items, so we're now going on to the planning applications.
Sorry, Chair, I hate to abuse the agenda, but legal advice we're getting here is we might have gone slightly quickly over item seven, and I think she just wanted to hear that the recommendation on the tree works is that the committee approved the tree works.
Agreed again, yes?
Thank you, thank you.
Go on to the individual applications to be considered tonight, and as we noted, there's no public speaking tonight, so we'll be doing them in the order that they are on the agenda. So the first one is for Jackson's Corner, and Marcy Riversky is going to, I apologise if I haven't got your name right, but please do introduce the item, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So planning permission is sought by Fat Hippo Group to remove the existing flat canopy at unit two of Jackson's Corner and replace it with a black fabric awning in similar fashion to the historic awning at unit one of Jackson's Corner. The remainder of the shopfront will largely be unchanged apart from some replacement doors and being painted in black. Just want to point out that the proposal doesn't affect the protected lettering on the upper floors of Jackson's Corner. Overall, the proposed new awning is not considered harmful to the historic character of the building nor the wider conservation area. Next slide, please. The proposal also includes internal alterations to make the unit suitable for restaurant use and the associated installation of a kitchen extract unit within the courtyard at the back of the building. I realise now it's almost impossible to see, there is a little star to indicate where the extract unit would be. So the applicant has submitted noise and odour assessments, which are considered acceptable by the environmental health team, and this is considered sufficient to limit the harm to the residents living above and behind the unit, and therefore the recommendation is made to grant planning permission. Thank you.
councillor Rowland?
Thank you, Chair, and I'd like to thank the officer for the presentation around this. Realise this was referred to committee at the request of my colleague councillor Page, and he and I shared the concerns in regards to the conservation area, the importance of Jackson's Corner and the development of that site over the years, and ensuring that we are still able to discern and understand the importance of Jackson's Corner just historically, and that historical context within the town, and the fact that probably, hopefully for many decades in the future, we will still be calling that Jackson's Corner. So the layout of the awning is understandable and I think reasonable, bringing that back in line with the rest of the awnings is obviously very appropriate. The awning that is there now, I realise, does provide some cover for the bus stop next to it, but it has no obligation to do so, and this also is part of the history of change of use of this building too, so it's been well handled. I feel that it's appropriate on that level, along with councillor Page, who I also know feels like it's appropriate. Concerns were addressed about the height of that canopy, should it be rolled out, because it may or may not be rolled out, obviously dependent on the weather, and that was noted in our update back at 2.4 metres, which gives proper accessibility under it. Finally, as a ward councillor and someone that has dealt with odours surrounding establishments too, we need to be very conscious of that, but I do take it on recommendation that the noise and odour assessments have been considered to be fair and reasonable by the environmental health group here, and as such, we will take that as understood and acceptable, and God forbid, there should be issues in the future that would be dealt with through the environmental health group. So beyond that, pleased and happy to go with officer's recommendation. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak on this? No, I'm not seeing anybody. Can I see all those in favour of the recommendation? Thank you, that's unanimous, which takes us on to item 10, which is the civic offices report, and Richard is going to introduce, Richard Hethoff is going to introduce this.
Thank you, Chair. Please see main agenda report and the update report from page 10 of the update pack. This is a Regulation 3 council-owned planning application, which involves extensions to the civic offices and relocation and part change of use to allow the inclusion of the relocated town centre library facility. Members of PAC visited the site on Thursday, 4th of January. There are three images to display. The first is the present street scene, the second one is a 3D model shot, and the third one is a coloured plan extract of the internal layout, as referred to in the update report. The update report from page seven of the pack expands on various matters, public consultation and the applicant's own consultation, which they've carried out before submission, land use, layout and circulation matters, design including public art, disabled access, energy use, trees and ecology, transport and parking, and then there's a section on corrections and clarifications. Since the publication of the update report, there are several further matters to bring to the committee's attention, and I'll run through these now. Regarding biodiversity net gain, the applicant's investigations have so far confirmed that the six trees referred to in the reports can be accommodated on-site in the landscape verge within council-owned land along the northern ends of Symon Street. This is an area where there were shrubs, and serviced investigations at this time indicate that subject to careful choosing of species and siting in relation to services and root barriers, the six trees should be capable of installation in this area. However, if only four trees could be accommodated, two trees could be sited nearby, adjacent to the Holy Brook culvert area and the walkway that goes through to Bridge Street. Officers are therefore confident that this can be achieved and meet the 12.8% biodiversity net gain target which is envisaged. Therefore, the recommendation needs to be amended, so rather than a need for a Section 106 agreement, a condition will be required for a plan and full landscaping and BNG details to have been submitted for commencement of development. Regarding public art, paragraph 4.2 of the update describes the developers' intended inclusion of the cartwheeling boy sculpture within the extension. The applicant has clarified their intentions with this regard. So whilst the plans show a recessed frame within the flank elevation from which to mount the artwork itself, which is indicated, the decision on feasibility of installation of this or any other art will come at a later point in the build process. Therefore, officers have suggested that in line with the materials conditions requirement in the main agenda report, where samples and materials are to be submitted prior to commencement of above-ground works, there should also be a feasibility study and as appropriate schedule of works for installation of any artwork at that point to be submitted and approved. Access improvements, paragraph 4.5 of the update report refers to the need to deliver improvements to the present external ramp and stairs down to Bridge Street. Whilst the applicant is content for the condition, given the phasing of the build, they've requested that the trigger require submission of a timetable for phasing of these works instead, and that's considered to be agreeable. There are some very slight revisions to the plans and revision numbers as opposed to those in the main report, these are not considered significant, and the changes are in any case discussed in the update reports and as I've been describing now. So in summary, with the updated recommendation deleting the requirement for Section 106, the additional conditions as set out in the update report, and as I've mentioned just now, the recommendation is to grant Regulation 3 planning permission. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. councillor Gavin?
Thank you, Chair. I welcome this application, I think it's a hugely exciting opportunity. We are, we must be mindful of our role here on the, as members of planning committee, that we are here to assess the planning application and look at it on its merits, on the merits of the planning application alone, rather than just our wider role as councillors of the town. However, I'm excited on both fronts, because I think this is a design which will give the, our civic offices a greater prominence, it will make them more welcoming, I think the large canopy opening is very modern and inviting, and I think the use of space which is largely redundant at the moment to house a library, which will bring the library much further into, or into a more central location with very good public transport access, is a really exciting opportunity, which we are lucky to have the opportunity to be able to do. I think the spaces are fit for the 21st century, I think the overlook inside, you know, the sort of way, almost an atrium where you can look over from the first floor, will make the whole building feel airy and inviting. I'm particularly excited about the potential of covering the courtyard, which will make that space a multi-use space, which could be used for lots and lots of different purposes. So as far as I'm concerned, the, this, looking at this application, I think it's a good application and that we should support it. Thank you.
Thank you, and I meant to say before we started that actually I do think there will be some operational issues that councillors will want reassurance about, but can I suggest we stick to the planning issues tonight, and that maybe the Housing, Neighbourhoods and Leisure Committee be asked to receive a report at an appropriate point on all those operational issues that councillors will rightly have questions about? We then stick to planning issues this evening. I now have councillor Williams indicating.
the one on the parking. To answer councillor Williams' question, the point about book storage is within 3.2 of the update report, where it does say there will be reduced book storage space. I think the idea is that it would be a much more, I think I've got this right in saying that they can get books from all over the place. It's definitely within the borough, I'm not sure whether it's within the county, but if a book is needed, it can be taken from one place to another very, very quickly, be brought in via the servicing area for somebody to want to look at. Understand the point regarding the parking, I could have a go at that, but I think Darren Cook would be better placed to respond on that than me, thank you.
Thank you, Darren, are you there online?
Thank you, Chair, I am here. Unfortunately, I couldn't hear anything that councillor Williams was actually saying. I heard everything else, but just not councillor Williams, I'm afraid, but somebody's mentioned in the chat that the query was about the disabled parking, is that right? In terms of the provision of disabled parking?
Yes, that's right.
In terms of the standards that we would require, as there's no parking being provided for the library at all, then there's no requirement for disabled parking either. Obviously, the library has been put forward as being a car-free development, and there are parking restrictions around the site that would make sure there's no overspill parking, and we can only object to developments that have a detrimental impact on capacity of the road network or highway safety, so from that point of view, we can't request any disabled parking through the planning grounds. I hope that answers the question.
councillor Williams, you?
Thank you, Chair. Oh, yes, I'm much louder now. I guess, what, if I could boil it down a bit, what I've got is residents in my ward who currently drive to the central library and make use of the disabled parking, which is immediately to the front of it, they use the library services, and then they get in their car, the blue badge parking that's directly in front. It seems like that they'll no longer be able to do that, that this is a car-free provision, I must have misunderstood something wrong, this is a car-free provision and disabled parking is not provided. Is that the case?
Thank you, Chair, so through your chair, that's correct, that's the provision, or the non-provision is what's being proposed by the applicant.
But I think if Richard could come in now as well, there is, and we need to, you know, we need to get detail on this as it's developed, but there is some way in which people can, at the moment, book for disabled parking round the side, and some of that will still exist, so I don't see why people couldn't book to come. So do you want to just come in on that?
Well, I think that's right, Chair. I think if you are presently a visitor to the civic offices and you need parking, you can book through our porters, and you can get a space on the, within the, within the disabled parking area, and then you can come in, have your meeting in the offices, and then you can drive away again, and we control that. Whilst there wouldn't be any specific provision at the moment, unless you require it, that arrangement could still hold for visitors of the library. Now, I don't know the specific setup of how that would be arranged, it would seem to me that we still have overall control there. There is also a side access door, which I don't know whether you can make out within the blue area on the plans there, which would mean that there seems to be more of a direct connection between the parking area and getting into the and getting into the, to the front of the civic offices and then potentially accessing the library from there. In the end, this is, this may well come down to detailed access arrangements. But if the committee felt that they wanted to stipulate that this had to happen, then, then that's up to them. If you wanted to see how the applicant felt about that, I don't know the answer. We might need to ask them. And if you, if you wanted to go down that route, then we have them in the meeting now, but we'd need to stop the meeting and, and, and bottom this issue out. So there are, there are various ways you'd like to do that. There are opportunities there and, and there is car parking available is what I would say.
Thank you. I think this is a sufficiently important issue for us to just hear from the applicant about this request that we do make that arrangement as easy as possible for people. So what do you reckon, five minutes?
I think that would do it unless there is anything else from the committee, Chair.
Well, shall we just hear what the other people I've got indicating are councillor Rowland and councillor Lang at the moment? Oh, and councillor Moore. So shall we take those and then we won't be having to go backwards and forwards? So.
Yeah, sorry, Chair. Could I, could I come in at the end when we discuss the?
Well, after we've heard.
Yeah. Just, just a few sentences at the end. I don't think I'll need to say much.
Councillor Rowland, you wanted to speak?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I might cut to the quick on this because disabled access is obviously something that is, is of primary importance to, certainly I know my colleagues and, and as councillor Williams has also expressed. But before, and I could have heard you incorrectly, you stated that there was no disabled access, I think. And through you, Chair, I'm not, I'm not quite sure, I may have misunderstood, but there is disabled access as there is normal disabled access now through the front of the building if you are ambulatory or you are on an ambulatory assisted, assisted scooter or something like that. That is, that is, as I understand, through the front of the building, I think the situation here revolves around accessibility for disabled access parking. And I see every reason to try to get that bottomed out. I'm vice chair of the disabled access working group. I'm sitting next to the chair of the disabled access working group. We brought this to the disabled access working group and they were rather reassured by the plans and did not express any of these concerns. So obviously with any, with any major application, we always try to make sure that they have visibility of this too. But I do, I do agree that this issue wants to be ironed out. Finally, I was, I was initially going to say, Chair, to, I am on a separate topic, interested in just saying something quickly about the cartwheeling boys, which I'm very pleased to see that that will be incorporated into this new, this new really exciting proposal, I feel, that we do have and represents that, that common thread of civic pride that we have in Reading. And as the former lead for culture when the unfortunate incident happened around the cartwheeling boys, I know that there's a lot of drive, a lot of interest through the Reading Dusseldorf Association, our twinning organisation there. There's been a lot of work to make sure that that is going to be able to be put back together and in a place of pride for this town. So I'm, I'm very happy about that, just as an aside. And beyond that, I back everything else that councillor Gavin said. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Moore, and then we'll take this short break.
Thank you, Chair. I won't, I won't rehash some of the things that councillor Gavin said. I agree, it's a, it's a really good application and really, really welcome to have a nice hub for people to go to, sort of really, really central, next to the Oracle, very, very easy to get to. Two things that actually go on a bit further from what councillor Williams said. One is about the reduced book storage space. It'd be good to understand how much reduced it is because reduced could mean 10 less, it could mean a thousand less. I just want, I'd like some clarity on that because that does make a difference. And then on the, the accessibility, is the reason for the large revolving door instead of having more of a sort of sliding door, is that for heat loss reasons? I'm just trying to work out whether it just seems to me odd to have, to make people with mobility issues go around the side of the building. But if that is the reason, I just, I just wanted some clarity on that. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. The, I've always thought, am I, am I right in saying that the shelving is a matter for the fit-out and it isn't a planning issue really? I mean, you can put more shelves or fewer shelves depending on how you want to arrange the inside space. I mean, is it, is it really a planning matter?
Right, now I've got councillor Chriswell as well.
Sorry, just, just reporting from, the librarian gave a presentation to H and L in which we asked about the reduced capacity of shelving. And the librarian was very happy that with a more modern system, even though there was a proportionally smaller shelf space, it would be more useful overall.
Right, we'll take our short break. I'm going to suggest five minutes, mostly to discuss the disabled access. So if you, if you all need to nip out for a comfort break, please be back in five minutes' time. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, thank you for that, Jim. And we've been speaking to the applicant on a, on a number of matters here. The main one is of the, of the car parking arrangement. The issue they find themselves in the moment is that they do need to finalize the, the other sort of management arrangements that they need around this. What we would suggest at the moment is that the, there'd be a condition of submission of a scheme for, for car park access. What we have discussed is that there are two possible favourable arrangements on, on this, which we need to be examined further. The first would be the extension of the use of the present visitor parking spaces on the Fobney Street side to be allowable, to be bookable by people who come to the, to the library. That would give them the immediate access. It's also the closest access to, to get, to get into the library. There is a second option and to be examined, and that's the spaces to the rear of Castle Street. They need to be managed a bit more intensively. They could be used for, for, for use of the, of the library and better visitor management. And some of the more hazardous use of those spaces could be accommodated within the basement car park. So I think officers are fairly happy that, that there is a solution there. So we would request the submission of a, of a car parking scheme via condition. I've got some answers on a couple of the other.
Would that be to come back to committee? Because I think we all want to be satisfied about this.
If you decide that's what you want to do. Just a quick response on some of the other points. On the revolving door, yes, I think the, the heat loss is, is the reason for having that. I've got clarifications that the, the side door on the front is actually a powered sliding door. So you'd, you'd approach it, press the button and it would, it would move away in front of you and you go straight through. The new door on the side is a powered door, again, which would swing open and allow people to go through. We've queried the, I've had a response on the reduction in shelf length. It is a reduction of 28 metres of shelf length within the library itself. However, that is supplemented by more off-site storage and the arrangements we've discussed already for accessing books. I think we were satisfied on the art, so I, hopefully I haven't missed anything. Thank you, Chair.
You wanted to come back on. Councillor Lang.
Thank you, Chair. And I feel I should say a few words, but I'll, I'll keep it, keep it short because most of it's been said tonight. Thank you, Nicola. I hope you're up in your new office at Tappan, sorry, and for the original report and she's up in a new job. And thank you, Richard, for the update report. Obviously, this is about the physical application, tractive design. We can talk about the canopy. I'm pleased that the coffee van's staying, that didn't get mentioned tonight. I think it's important. The, the cart, the cartwheeling boys, I do hope that it does come to fruition. I'm always a bit wary when we talk about feasibility. I hope that we can push that as hard as we can to get, make sure they get back in pride of place. Totally agree with councillor Gavin's, Gavin's points. Also, councillor Williams raised some very, very good valid points. And yes, overall, absolutely. Now I'm going to go into the operation line. It's a, it's a central location where residents recognise it as a central location. You know, it's accessible. You know, it's an accessible environment or should be for our residents to provide all the services that we provide as a council. It's integral to the Minster quarter which is hopefully coming up soon and yes, a positive. Yeah, that's all I've got to say really. Excellent. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else want to say anything? No, in which case, with the amendments that Rich had mentioned in terms of the conditions and so on, are people content to support the passing of this application? Let's see all those in favour. Thank you very much.
Thank you Chair. Full planning permission is sought to the Molish number 19 Newcastle Road and erect nine new residential properties at the rear of numbers 17 to 29 Newcastle Road. This is an allocated site for residential development within the Reading local plan. The properties will be accessed by a new access road between numbers 17 and 23 Newcastle Road where number 19 stands now. And the site is bounded by Sintra Park to the north. The proposed dwellings would form two short terraces of four and five dwellings of which four will be two-bedroom properties and five will be four-bedroom properties. The proposal also includes two off-road parking spaces per property and associated landscaping including new trees. The proposal despite the new landscaping and planting results in a minor biodiversity net loss which cannot be offset with any additional planting on the site. The recommendation is therefore made to grant planning permission subject to legal agreement to agree not only the affordable housing contribution but also off-site compensation for the minor biodiversity net loss which the applicant has agreed to enter into. Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions from anybody? Councillor Gavin.
Thank you Chair. This is a site which has been talked about and speculated about and I think we, I don't know whether actually an application has ever come to committee before but certainly when I represented this part of town there was a considerable interest in the land at the back. They have hugely long gardens from the original houses. And this is, you know, let's not beat about the bush, this is back garden development. But there are times, I apologise, there are times when that is appropriate and I think that this is one of them. I know that there is concern about the loss of biodiversity. However, some of that biodiversity is, I think, caused by the fact that these back gardens have been allowed to go to rack and ruin. They haven't been cultivated, it's just become kind of rough land if you like in which brambles have developed and therefore mice and thrush and lots of other animals have moved into. But essentially, this is a brownfield site. It is a site which has been developed in the past. We are desperate for housing, it is surrounded by housing, it is a sound development. The houses, it seems to me, are well designed, they fit in with the nature of the area in which they are situated. And I can see absolutely no reason why we should not welcome the addition of some extra housing in an area in which we know there is huge demand for housing. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councillor Robyn-Sullivan, councillor Williams.
Thank you Chair. First of all, thank you to the officer for the report. I think I do share the concerns from councillor Williams in terms of a site visit for this before any determination can be made. Given that we normally have photographs of the land and those don't appear within the actual report itself. One thing that struck me was in consultation round two, two letters received, the last one, harm to existing trees and wildlife habitats on site. In the actual report, all it mentions really is bramble bushes. Has a proper study taken place in terms of what wildlife actually exists within the, you know, the site for the proposed development? It would be interesting to understand exactly what will be lost if this is given the go-ahead. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Do you want to respond to that? Is there any further information about?
I'll need to refer back to documents to double check and answer.
Councillor Williams, I think you're next.
Thank you Chair. Obviously, I share some of the concerns that have just been mentioned because I was hoping to do a site visit. But I partly agree with councillor Gavin, we do need housing and we need affordable housing. But we know that residents locally are unhappy with this development. Objections were submitted concerned with the impact on the green space of the area, the biodiversity loss, the potential over-development as they see it, the close proximity to the park which is concerning and the large mature trees close to the site, among other things. Briefly, I did email the planning officer a couple of extra questions in advance. So thank you very much for the answers I received. It'll take me a while to fully understand what tandem development really is in policy H11 but I understand this complies with that because the removal of number 19 creates an actual road to the rear rather than a glorified track or driveway. And I couldn't quite see the EV charge points with my eyesight on the plan but I'm happy the officer has pointed me to them and they're conditioned in condition 10, I think, but I didn't make a note of that. So with these developments, we are at the behest of the local plan which has for some time, as councillor Gavin rightly says, allocated 18 to 27 new dwellings to the rear of numbers three to 29. So the principle of development is not really in question. Planning decisions need to follow that planning policy. But the best we can do, in fact the least we can do is ensure developments are good ones. To do that, I thought we needed to see the site, to see the location and to see how close it is to the park. To see the impact that the demolition of one property in the building of two terraces of nine buildings. The image there does feel cramped and close to those mature trees. And the back gardens obviously have space for some development, the question is, is this development right? Would a better development be lower density? Would a better development be further away from the park boundary? We won't know because we're not going to view directly but we do have the plans before us. I think without that site visit and with all those concerns, I guess that we're forced to accept the officer's recommendation and we're forced to accept that the local plan allows this development because we don't have reason to refuse. So yeah, I'm keen to hear what other members think Chair but disappointed.
Thank you councillor Hawesby-Smith, you were next.
Thank you Chair. I think what councillor Williams has said in terms of the local plan and the presumption in favour of sustainable development means that we have to assess this application in terms of its merit. And to my mind, it's got a very clear merit. It's already been assessed as suitable for housing development. So if we don't approve this application, we would need to approve an alternative application. So some development is expected and I don't get the feel from some of the objectors that that has been taken on board. I feel that we've got a really useful mix of five four-bedroom properties and four two-bedroom properties here. That will, I don't think that will generate a material problem in terms of extra traffic and certainly the car parking is already covered in the report and there's two for each property. So I don't think there's going to be any material traffic impact on Newcastle Road. On the contrary, I think that this is much-needed family accommodation. So generally, I would be in favour of it. I think it's slightly, well, some of the other things that have come up in terms of the overall garden space in terms of the layout seems to be good and the distance between these properties, these proposed properties and the other properties on Newcastle Road is 34 metres. So there's no overshadowing impact in those sort of terms. The noise issue has been, it seems to me, dealt with by condition. I think it is unfortunate there's no affordable housing within the site but the mix is great and the contribution to affordable housing is also very good. So that's to its credit, I think. So a couple of points that I'd want to just query really are about, again like councillor Williams, the electric vehicle charging points. I wanted to just make sure that however, I don't know how many of those there will be but I would hope that the infrastructure at least is in place for all of the properties so that if people do get electric cars later on that they will relatively easily be taken on board. And also, I didn't see anything about the energy assessment in the report. I wondered whether it was covered by paragraph 6.19 on page 74 which deals with materials but I would appreciate some kind of feedback on that. But generally, it seems to me this is a really excellent proposal and I'm delighted to be able to support it.
Just really quickly, could you repeat the last question because I didn't quite catch that? Thank you.
Yep, it's about the energy assessments of the new buildings proposed. I wondered if it's covered by paragraph 6.19 which deals with materials which could also deal with, you know, how energy efficient they are. But I wondered if we could have a little bit of elaboration on that. Thank you.
Okay, do you want to come back at the end on all the points that have been, thank you.
I'll address all the points at the end.
Councillor Ennis, you're next.
Yeah, I've never been a fan of back garden development but the question I want to ask is if we oppose this tonight, this meets planning regulation. So the odds of us winning an appeal would be pretty limited if we opposed it, that is a question. I'm almost answering myself but I think we need to know that before we think about opposing stuff. Because it's good, I love opposing stuff but if it meets planning law, we'll end up losing. But just want to ask that question.
Councillor Moore, I think you're next.
Thank you Chair, I'm very happy to say that I am very much a Yimby and this is indeed in a backyard. So very good in that case, very happy with it. Just a question about the BNG. Obviously, it's reporting in the negative and it says there will be off-site provision. How do we as councillors know in the future when and where that provision has been implemented?
Thank you. Councillor Lang.
Mine's not a question Chair, I do apologise. This is terrace development, residents are crying out for houses all the time. They say we build too many flats, so we get development with houses and this is a good one. Unobtrusive cul-de-sac, two allocated parking, off-road parking spaces per house so it's not going to add to any congestion, parking congestion on Newcastle Road. Seeing the local plan as brownfield as has been stated. Decent off-site contribution, yes, of course, if we could have had an affordable home there, it would have been good. But these are good family-sized houses as councillor Hawesby-Smith said. 34 metres for neighbours, 10 metre gardens, you know, backing on to a park. Lovely area for the residents to live, you know, I'm sure once it's built, everything would just fit in nicely. So, you know, no secret on this one, I'm fully in favour of this application. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Not seeing anybody else, so do you want to come, Julie wants to answer the broader question about how we keep track of any offsites money being used. And then maybe Marcie can come back on the other issues.
Sorry Chair, just I might just jump in on the broader of us in that gain. I think the 106 has the terms at this stage would secure the principle of what we need to secure but the 106 agreement would be quite a lengthy, detailed legal document with all sorts of inclusions which would be including monitoring the agreement and making sure that the money that's secured is spent on what it's secured to do. So there'd be, there's a normal sort of monitoring provision built into 106s normally. So there's be, the scope within the section 106 legal agreement to do quite a lot of, I suppose, wording really, much more than you would with a condition perhaps. So yeah, we'd expect monitoring to be included in the 106.
Julie, do you want to deal with the broader question first and then with one or two other things?
Was this the question about the appeal?
About how we keep track of off-site contributions and then we'll come back in on the more specifics. So I would normally be relying on our planning policy team and our natural environment team to look after the biodiversity net gain rollout across the borough generally. This is a new science for us with the bio net gain matrix relatively new and also the guidance for this, I don't know if it's been published yet, they were promising it by the end of last year. So I need to check with colleagues about that. But basically, as Steve's tried to identify, when we have a site like this, and we have had other sites where they haven't been able to provide the biodiversity gain on site, they then have to commit to identifying that either they own an alternative site or another developer can come forward and we can then use the credits or the money that is calculated as a sort of weird calculation, how we work out how much money is required. And then that will then go towards, a bit like when we get off-site money towards affordable housing, it would go towards providing that enhanced biodiversity habitat elsewhere in the borough.
Sorry, I think that was partly the question as well about how we would know how the off-site contribution to housing got you.
Oh, well again, our colleagues in our housing team are in charge of using that money to build council house schemes across the borough and they do provide us with their own data as to how many houses they're building on using contributions that come forward through such 106 agreements. So that is monitored and if members are interested, we can try and get that information to you as a reporter at some future date.
Can I just come back on that quickly? Yeah, it was more about the BNG thing but I suppose the wider point is also valid. I think it'd just be nice that when we get either affordable housing off-site in one of our wards or biodiversity net gain in one of our wards, it's something to be celebrated, right? And something we have secured as part of the planning process. And it's almost like we've agreed a plan application but we've not celebrated the fact we've got this other thing somewhere else as well as part of the process. And I think that's a good thing that we should actually shout more about.
Thank you for that, yeah. Are there a few other bits and pieces there? Do you want to pick up on them? Thank you.
Yeah, so addressing the earlier questions, first of all on biodiversity. There's been a number of specialists biodiversity and ecology survey submitted with regards to the site which are pretty much in line with what councillor Gavin pointed out that the reason the biodiversity net gain is technically a loss is because the land that is there at the moment is so complex because it is so overgrown and there are a number of species on site that have been identified such as newts and hedgehogs that use the site presently. And the recommendation of the ecology reports is that habitat enhancement schemes are worked into the project such as bug hotels. And these have been added as a condition to the permission that prior to commencement, the applicant would have to submit a habitat enhancement scheme which would be looked at by our ecology team. Further on that, our local plan policy EN12 says that off-site credits are considered when the loss cannot be avoided mitigated and as a last resort compensated for on-site. The applicant informed me that they have tried very hard to figure out different species, different planting locations. Because of the amount of hard surface, obviously where the houses are, the roads, pavements, car parking spaces, they couldn't fit any more planting than they have already on to the site, resulting in... the site, resulting in a minor net loss. So while this is where the biodiversity metric gets a bit tricky. So the, while in terms of the amount of plants is increasing, the complexity of them is not, and that's where the net loss comes from. So the proposal is to compensate for that off-site via legal agreement for the applicant. I think we need to figure out how much they're going to provide and where. But the agent, the applicant has agreed to go into that agreement. It's just the details that need to be sorted out, I think, prior to sort of completion on this one. So just moving on to the energy efficiency. This is something that it wouldn't be covered under the materials condition, but we do have other conditions that take care of that. So we have the design stage and as-built energy efficiency conditions, which cover water efficiency, energy efficiency. The proposal does also include electric vehicle charging points for each house. These are covered by an additional condition for the details of the cabling and the infrastructure, details to be obtained pre-commenagement and then maintained thereafter. And I think that might be all of the questions, but if I've missed anything.
I was just going to come in there, so we're confirming that it looks as if we've omitted to include the energy efficiency as a condition in the list on your agenda papers. So we need to make sure we've got that added. Or is it, is it there?
No, so I think conditions 11 and 12 through you Chair, which talks about SAP assessment minor, it's just slightly jargon, yeah. But yeah, and that refers to policy H5. That would be for a minimum of 19% improvement in planning mission rate over target mission rate. So SAP calculation is just the basic building regs calculations and then there's an improvement on that of at least 19%.
Okay, I think that's everything that was.
You know, you aren't planning, you don't look at appeal, but the fact is, is, I'm struggling, but there's nothing there that I can see that we can really get hold of to oppose. Is there? That's, I'm being real now, isn't there? Getting realistic.
Yeah, through you Chair, I think it's a clear recommendation for approval and officers are very satisfied that it's something which is recommended for approval on good sound policy grounds.
In which case, can I see all those in favour of granting this application as further recommendation? Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you for that one. Moving on to the last application tonight, which is item 12 Thameside Primary School. Julie, I think you're introducing this, thank you. Thank you Chair. So this is an application for Thameside Primary School to retrospectively approval for the retention of the single-store modular classroom on their site and also to seek permission to extend the time for that unit to be on their site for a further five years. And the recommendation is to grant approval. Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Davies?
Very briefly, this is in Thames Ward. And I was actually on the governing body when this was first applied for and installed, so I do know quite a lot about the school. It's a, it's a really great school and has got good SEM provisions. So happy to, more than happy that this carries on and so are local residents and parents of kids who use the school. So yeah, support it.
Thank you. Can I see anybody else wanting to say anything? Can we see all those in favour of the recommendation? Thank you, that's unanimous as well. Right, thank you all very much. That's it now. Thank you.